You know, I just don't know how people do it. Well, I mean, they're idiots and they're drug addicts and they're, you know, they're constantly self-medicating, you know. Some people just go up with you and become abusers and blah, 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 but.
He makes sure we start sometime here. I don't return that call.
I think it's okay.
I just want to make sure my spirits are still. They're not spinning.
I just glanced at it. I really didn't have time to go through it one by one this time. I can't. Honestly, I go through it. I mean, I go through that, I mean, on set.
Yeah.
Despite the steel.
Steel, that's the end of their life and they need to relax and then they're busting the bud.
Everybody. This is a real calamity, I'll tell ya.
Well, I hate that.
I mean, it's phenomenal.
I just hope we don't have it. My oldest one told me, he's thirty-one, he's married, lives up in Illinois, and said, Dad, he said, I'm never having any kids because she's a really poor woman. So I'm sure that won't happen. He said, okay. He'll suffer, he'll, he'll, he'll deal with her till he does. And it's just all about her and always will be. He is the nicest human being alive. How he came from me, I have no idea. His mother is a real sweet gal.
I could call this meeting to order. First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody here. Thank you for showing up. It's good to see so many people show up and I hope we can continue this in the future. So the first order of business tonight, we'll have an invocation. I've asked Pastor Chuck Lasseter from First Free Will Baptist Church if he would lead us in our invocation. If you would silence your phones or turn them off, please.
Father God, we come to your presence tonight to thank you for every blessing that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for the city of Bowie, dear God. Lord, tonight in this council meeting, I pray and ask that the council members and all that are represented here, dear Father, that they would conduct the city's business in order. And Father, just bring into our lives, dear God, the realization that Bowie is a place, dear God, that I think you want to bless. So help us tonight, your Father, as the city council makes decisions, dear God, make the best decisions for the people of Bowie here in the state of Texas. And we ask that you bless each and every one of them, dear God. Thank you for those that are here to conduct business tonight and bless them as well. We ask this in Christ's name. Amen.
Show me the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, the first agenda item is number four, the city manager's report. So Bert, if you will give us that.
The mayor and I went to American Hat Company this last week to watch festivities where they got a grant, the video of their manufacturing operation for training purposes. The grant was from the Texas Workforce Commission through the Texas Department of Agriculture. It was for a little more than ninety-eight thousand dollars. You probably saw that in the paper. Barbara's cooking me on that. Last Tuesday, I attended a meeting of the Neighborhood Watch Program. Bob Blackburn and Kent Stagg of our police department, the speakers of the program. They gave an excellent program on the crime, on crime in the holiday season. I would urge everyone to get involved in the Neighborhood Watch Program. You can help lower crime in our city center by keeping your eyes and ears open. It goes to the adage, if you see something, say something. We have on our agenda tonight the Texas Water Development Board and the possibility of the city getting a loan to replace all of our old dilapidated sewer lines. We had a conference call this past week with the Water Development Board on N.C. and it included the city hater engineering, government council, and personnel from the Texas Water Development Board. We have started the process of making applications for a loan. We will discuss it tonight on the agenda. We had a person from Texas Department of Agriculture doing a visit this last Thursday looking at our community block, sewer line replacement area between Wyans and Potato Street that runs parallel to Mill Street. We have a collapsed sewer line under the railroad that has been giving us trouble for years and the grant will help us take care of it. It is the first step and the start of the process. If you'll look, I think that Sandy passed out a map showing you basically what they're doing. There's some changes on it where the engineers will make changes on the direction of the line to make it better for us. That's it. The water line on Lydia and Patterson Streets is progressing. The guys were making steady progress, laying life until they were about to cross El Dorado Street and they hit a boulder at the back of their cemetery and then on the end of the road on El Dorado Street. They had to run a jackhammer for the excavators in order to get the rock out of the line area. Obviously, this has slowed our progress, but the guys will get it done. That's all. Anybody got any questions?
Okay, no questions, so we'll move on. Thank you, Bert, for that report. Next section, article number five, public comments. This particular section here is where people can freely come and speak and ask any questions or make any statements or comments. We can't deliberate on it because it's not on the agenda, so if it's, we feel like it should be on the agenda in the future, we'll do so. So if anyone has anything to say in the public section, public comment section, go ahead. Okay, hearing that, we'll move on. Section number six, department, department reports. Stony Lawrence, come give us a report.
Before we start this, I got a question. When did we change our agenda to include department reports?
The one that Bert gave?
Yes, because we normally get these, we all voted on getting these through email.
I made a suggestion that they come.
Okay, well.
Do you still get them on email?
Yes, but I think we need to stick to the way we voted. We voted for these to be through email and not through at the meeting.
Is that right?
I don't know that we voted to exclude them from your meetings. I think you guys were getting the information through the email, but I didn't know that that meant nobody.
Yeah, we voted on, I'm telling you, the department had reports every month through email.
Okay.
Instead of through Bert's, he was including them in the packet, but we voted on getting them through email. So I feel like it's.
Well, the reason I brought this up, I feel like the public may have some questions about this and we'd like to hear what the department is have to say. If this is something that needs to be changed, I'm not aware of that, so.
Well, I'd like to make a motion. We don't do oral department head reports at the meeting. I think we should stick to what we voted on, have them through email.
I'll second that motion.
I have a question. Is that on the agenda?
It is not on the agenda. It's just, it's just a report.
I know, but it's an actionable item.
We would have to put an item on the agenda to discuss removal or not having reports.
So maybe this is something that we need to look at when we're looking at you guys' council procedures kind of thing. I don't recall that vote about not ever having a department head speak at a meeting and so I need to look back.
Well, I mean, it's, we haven't, as long as I've been on council, we've never had oral department reports at the meeting.
Well, that is something that's been done in the past.
It's done in the past and I personally like it and I think citizens probably would like to hear that, too.
Well, I think we need to discuss that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Do we need to do something with this since it's not on the agenda?
Are you moving to place it on the agenda?
He's, I think, Jason, if I understand, you're moving to not have Stony and Jay write a report tonight.
Exactly. Or if you will be reworded as having to postpone this until we discuss this and have it all department reports.
There's not.
Which we can, it is an actionable item.
Okay, but there's not any action to be taken. It's just a report, so I'm not really understanding.
Well, it's, I don't think you understand it. I don't think we should have, I don't think we should have oral department reports at a city council meeting. I think that we, we paid Bert as our city manager to manage those part, those people and if he has something he wants to bring up, he needs to bring it up inside the manager report.
Even though it's been done in the past and you voted not to?
No, it has, though in the past, Bill, we have not done this. We, the motion had been made to, for us to take department reports in email and we all agreed to do that.
I recall.
We never voted on having a department.
I recall when Larry Slack was the mayor at that time and he had those departmental meetings.
Okay, I'd like to say something really quick if I could just interject real fast. The department reports were on the agenda, are on the agenda on a routine basis, every, every meeting. They were removed without council approval by our city man, by our former mayor. We voted at the meeting to have some sort of a report given to us because we weren't receiving reports at all. So then we started getting them by email.
Okay.
So all our mayor's done is put them back on whenever they were taken off without council proof.
So if you're saying what she did was wrong, then what we're doing here is wrong.
I'm not saying what she did was wrong or right. I'm just saying that's.
Well, you said without council approval.
Well, actually, she did do it without council. I'm not saying that was right or wrong.
I think, I think.
Because she has control of the agenda, so.
If you want a department report thrown here at the meeting, I don't have a problem, but I think we need to decide as a group to do that.
Okay.
If you don't have a problem with that, I think that's why.
Do we want to table this motion and put, and discuss this?
Well, no, no, I mean, we've got a motion, even though I don't think this is probably an actionable item. We, we, we have a motion to not have Stony or Jay present a report tonight and I think we have a second on that.
So what's up?
You know, go ahead, go ahead and call it. Who's new mayor?
Okay. Okay, let's take a vote on that. Mr. Kent?
Oh, wait a minute. Wait a minute.
Sandy's got to ready.
Yes, she's not.
Not ready.
So this is a motion to not have a report tonight?
Right, yes, to not accept these reports.
Or accept oral reports. Tonight.
Tonight.
Okay, so we have a second. Can I, do we have a discussion now?
Yeah, you can go ahead and discuss, yeah.
Okay, so what is, and I'm not trying to be difficult, I really aren't, just what is the reason for not having them?
Okay, the question, the reason is, if we have a problem with one of the reports, okay, I feel we should go to Bert, the city manager, the boss of these people and explain our, our problems with him. We don't need to sit here and per se throw, stone throw at these people, okay, when we paid Bert to do this job. That's his job. Now we're trying to take away his job and, and listen to the reports. That's what we paid Bert to do. That's, that's the concern I have.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not trying, I'm not saying we shouldn't have them. I love reports, but I don't think that this is the venue for this.
Okay, so then my thing would be that this is not a point for us to reprimand them.
Okay.
This is a point for us to ask what's going on with the city and, and find out, you know, okay, where you're doing this, where you're doing that, or whatever. And the same for the citizens. The citizens aren't privy to our reports.
Okay, couldn't you do that through a city manager report as well?
How would they get that to the citizens?
Well, Bert.
How would Bert get that to the citizens if they're not here in the meeting?
Well, Bert's reporting on, on.
On the overall status of the city, but not of each department.
I could see where, if we have something unusual, something, you know, not status quo that they want to report, I'm all for it. I think they need to come forward and report it. Maybe something they're proud of or something that they've.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
I'm all for it. But in general, I'm of the same mindset that, you know, on a day-to-day basis, the drudgery of what they're doing.
Yes.
Because it's no fun, should come to us in an email report.
And to be honest, I mean, I got Jay's report. I flipped it and I'm like, okay, they did this, 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 what, I mean, it's a synopsis of basically of what they do every day, which is fabulous. I mean, I applaud that great work, you know, giving us the reports and everything. But if there's something overall that maybe they did that was beneficial to the city that, you know, he wants to draw attention to or something that he's having trouble with, you know, that maybe was not apparent from just the day-to-day activities, then, I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with him standing up there and saying, okay, look at this, we did this and it was great, or, you know, we did this and it didn't work out so well, maybe we should do something else, you know, or whatever.
Any other comments or discussion about this before we take a vote? Okay, Mr. Kent, how do you vote on this?
I still need clarity. This is a vote on whether or not they're going to be able.
Right.
To give the report tonight.
If you vote aye, then they don't give the report, right?
Right.
Okay.
If you vote aye, that means they're not going to give the report based on his motion.
No.
So you vote no? Ms. Buckmaster?
No.
Mr. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Higgins?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
So the motion carries that we will not hear the reports tonight. Okay? Stony and Jay, you're off the hook.
But if you have anything you want to brag to me about, feel free to come up to me afterwards. Brag away.
I'm not trying to take Vegas for nothing.
Well, that's what I, I figured y'all were already prepared to give one, so might as well have it give it.
Okay, moving on to item number seven, consent agenda, consent approval of the agenda items. There's four sections here. We're going to talk about them all at once and come back at the end and vote on them. But, so right now, the, the first item is approval of the minutes. Do we have a?
You're going to do them individually?
We're going to vote all on, on all of it once, but after Carrie gives her financial report under article number four. Okay. Do we have a second on that?
No, we're.
I'm sorry, we're not, we're not voting to do them yet. We're just, I'm just explaining, we're going to talk about them and then we're going to come and vote them at the end. I'm sorry about that confusion. So we're going to talk about the approval of the minutes, the resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty, resolution authorizing the city manager to write off the uncollected utility account receivables over fifteen months. And I don't have that handy here, the amount of that. Do you have that?
Sixty-four.
How much was that? Okay, the amount we need to write off is three thousand six hundred sixty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents on uncollectible utilities. And the next one is resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty, resolution authorizing the city manager to write off uncollected library overdue fines over fifteen months. And that is thirty-four dollars and twenty-six cents. And the next item is approve the quarterly financial statement ending September twenty nineteen. And Carrie, you want to come give us a report on that?
Everyone just wrap around and put the other department.
I started to mention that, but I thought I'd let you say that. So you're not off the hook tonight. If you could speak up so we could all hear you, please.
I mean, I've got your sheets that have the typical points of interest. So since it's the end of September, we're sitting at a hundred percent for everything and the revenues for the utility fund were doing good, right where they need to be. The interest, as you can see, is just under a hundred thousand, which was really good for the year. And the expenses for the water department were right at seventy-one percent. And the general fund revenues were about a hundred and eighteen percent, which was left quite a bit. And the expenses for the general fund were just under one hundred percent. I have any questions about any of the specific things on this?
Any questions over these numbers that Carrie's given us? Okay, if not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items, one through four.
Subway.
Mr. Love makes a motion, his second.
I'll second.
Mr. Bell. Okay. Mr. Kent, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Buckmaster?
Aye.
Mr. Love?
Aye.
Mr. Malone?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, next item is number eight. We're going to move that until after the executive session. Oh, I'm sorry, mitigation plan. All businesses discuss a NorTex mitigation project plan update. Do you have that, Bert?
Yes, there's nothing to do. We're still waiting on our plan to be approved. I had heard these days, talked to the county judge the other day, they're in the same boat we are, just going to do a countywide approval. I'm not sure of what, how that process is going to happen, so as they approve the county, they'll approve ours and go from there. That's it.
So we'll be in with the county when they approve the county? We'll be included in that?
No, we're actually separate from the county, but they'll, they'll probably approve everything from Monte County.
Okay.
If we didn't get included, the way the process works, if we hadn't done a mitigation plan on our own, we would have to go to the county and get them to make the application for us, what we were applying for a loan or a grant. But since we did it on our own, then we, we can do that on our own. That's happened in other counties and like, it's county government didn't or did a mitigation plan and a city didn't, they had to talk to the county and they're doing their grant application process and they're very unlikely to do it because it's, you know, it's quite tedious and they're not getting anything out of it. So we chose to do our own.
I'm just curious, Bert, are the other cities in Monte County doing a mitigation plan, too, or are we the only ones?
Um, we're Doug, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
I don't remember if Nokona's doing one or not. I don't believe so. I believe they're in Fallin County as well, yeah.
Okay.
So, you know, us and the county are the ones that are doing it, so.
When do you expect the approval to come through?
Sometime in the next month, but I said that two months ago. You're, you're at the mercy of the state to get that approved, but.
Okay, any other questions for Bert on this? If not, we'll move on to item number nine, new business. It's the recommendation from planning and zoning on requests from Victron Stores to replat nine point five-nine acres out of blocks fourteen and fifteen, HCSL survey A dash three nineteen, creating lots one and two, block one. Gateway of Bowie Edition, and I like the name of that new edition, Gateway of Bowie. That's pretty neat.
Gateway Edition. Bill Calabretta, chairman of planning and zoning board, Mr. Mayor, chairman, I mean, the council members, we met on the November twenty-first. A forum was met, we had discussions about the replating of the nine point five-nine acres, making two parcels and taking some from section fourteen, putting it with section thirty-five so that we could have block one, block two. And this has all been approved unanimously and so we recommend to the council that they move on this as well.
Okay. Thank you very much, Bill, for that. Do I have a motion to approve this? Are there any discussion about it before we do?
Where is this at? Is this the new service?
Room twenty-five to twenty-seven.
Yeah.
At the travel center.
Council members, this property was rezoned in February from agriculture to commercial so that they could develop this property.
So they bought the whole nine acres and this is to split it in half and they're going to sell or do something?
They bought one and sell the other, is what I understand.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move.
Okay, Ms. Buckmaster, second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Bell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Mr. Malone?
Aye.
Mr. Love?
Aye.
Ms. Buckmaster?
Aye.
Mr. Kent?
I'll second.
Okay.
Do you need these out?
Yep.
Thank you, Bill, for that report. Under new business, number two, designate a representative as NorTex Regional Planning Commission proxy or alternate. And it's my understanding that in the past, the mayor and the mayor pro tem were on this committee and Wayne Bell was the mayor pro tem and Wayne and I talked a little bit the other day about that and I think it's important that whoever gets on this can attend these meetings. I know some of you folks still work. It's hard to get away from work to go to these meetings, so I'd ask you to consider that before you get on these boards because if you're on it and you never can make the meetings, that creates a problem. So do I have any motions or nominations for people to serve on this board? We need to.
Do you want to serve on?
I was actually going to ask Wayne if, I'd like to nominate Wayne to continue the work on the NorTex if willing.
That's good.
I would second that.
So we have a motion and a second for Wayne and we need to do one more. All in favor?
Thank you, Wayne.
Let's go ahead and go on, Wayne.
Okay, that's right, yeah. So let's, all in favor of Wayne, Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Buckmaster?
Aye.
Mr. Love?
Aye.
Mr. Malone?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
And Mr. Bell, you don't get a vote. Thank you, Wayne, for volunteering to do this again. That would be great. I'd like to go up there with you sometime. So we need to do one more. And for what it's worth, I'm willing to do that, but if somebody else wants to do it, y'all jump right in there.
Well, I'd like to make a motion. Diana has been working with this for a while and see if she'll be willing to continue the work because they're actually doing really good progress over there, so.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, so we have a first and a second, so let's vote on that.
Does she agree?
Do you agree? Was she shaking her head? I'm seeing that, yes. Mr. Thomas?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're voting for Diane Higgins to be on the NorTex.
Thomas is my first name.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Ms. Buckmaster?
Aye.
Mr. Love?
Aye.
Mr. Malone?
Aye.
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
We're not going to call on you, Ms. Higgins, because you're going to be the one. Well, thank you for volunteering to do that. I think that's great. Next thing on the agenda is item number three, appoint a chairperson, which has to be a council member to the hotel motel board. I'm not sure who's on that now.
Kayland was our representative.
Kayland was the representative, okay. So we need to make a recommendation for someone to fill that chairperson, that chairperson's point on the hotel motel board.
When do they, when do they meet?
I'm not sure.
We just did this.
No, we did the other.
NorTex was white.
Two people for NorTex.
This is the hotel motel board.
There's two for NorTex.
There was always supposed to be one person on NorTex.
No, there's two.
Those two.
A proxy and an alternate.
Okay, I apologize. I thought there was only one. I was going to nominate Diane for hotel motel because I swear she's been working.
Well, I was wondering.
I was working, she stood and looked at me like I was crazy. I apologize, that's my fault.
I was wondering. I've done both, Jason, actually, because I worked hard with. I was wondering what work you were talking about.
You got it right, Jason, despite yourself.
The problem is I worked hard with Bert on the, and Doug on the.
I apologize. I, I, I thought we were talking about the hotel with Diane.
No, I worked hard with Bert and Doug on the, and I'm losing it at the moment.
Tracy, go with it.
Help me, Bert.
Have you, have you come, I'm at the. UFC?
We went to all those meetings together...
Okay.
Back then, so I figured that was the reason behind the first one.
Okay, so are you willing to serve on both?
I've worked hotel motel packs for 20 years, yes, so I'm very familiar with how they operate.
If you're willing to work on both, that's what we want to know.
Yes, I will do both.
Okay.
Because I'm very familiar, hotel motel packs is not very, they don't, we need a couple of times a year, and yes, I'm very familiar with how they operate and what that money is for and not for, so...
Okay, so we've already voted to have you on, so we can move on.
Just go ahead, dude.
Yeah, you're good, you're good.
I actually understand the purpose behind them, yes.
I thought we had a second.
Nobody's made a motion.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that Diana Higgins serve on the hotel motel tour.
And we're second on that?
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kent, how do you vote? Ms. Buckmaster? Mr. Love?
Aye.
Mr. Bell?
Oh, yeah.
How do you vote, Mr. Bell? Mr. Malone?
Aye.
Okay. All right, you're on there, Ms. Higgins, thank you. Okay, the next one is the reappointments to the 4A board, and we've got three of them, we need to vote on these individually as well. First one on here is Tim Bowles, I don't think I know you, Tim, if you're here. Oh, hi, Tim. I'll come to get around to shake your hand one of these days. So we need to make, have a motion to reappoint Mr. Bowles to the 4A board.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Kent, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Buckmaster?
Aye.
Mr. Love?
Aye.
Mr. Malone?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
And Mr. Bell?
Aye.
Okay. Congratulations, Tim. The next one is Dean Myers, are you here, Dean? I don't, oh, you're Dean, okay, hi, Dean, I don't know you either, I'll get around to meeting you soon, hopefully. Okay, do we have a motion for Mr. Myers?
So moved.
Okay, second. Ms. Higgins? Mr. Bell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Mr. Malone?
Aye.
Mr. Love?
Aye.
Ms. Buckmaster?
Aye.
And Mr. Kent?
Aye.
Okay. And the next one is Carla Swafford. Carla here? Oh, hi, Carla, I don't know you either, but I'll get around to meeting you two, hopefully. Okay, have a motion for Ms. Swafford?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Say again.
Okay. Mr. Kent, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Buckmaster?
Aye.
Mr. Love?
Aye.
Mr. Malone?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
And Mr. Bell?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, folks, for volunteering to be back on these boards. Okay, the next item is number five, reappointments to the 4B board. Again, there's four people, we'll vote on these individually as well. Todd Brown, are you here? I don't know.
Todd's not here tonight, he had a bad day in the morning.
Okay, I don't know him either, I may know him if I saw him, but I'll get around to meeting him, so, well...
He serves on your PNC board as well.
Say again?
He serves on the PNC board as well.
Okay, I'll probably meet him then. Okay, do I have a motion for Mr. Brown?
Subway.
Okay, second?
Aye.
Higgins? Okay, Mr. Bell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Mr. Malone?
Aye.
Mr. Love?
Aye.
Ms. Buckmaster?
Aye.
And Mr. Kent?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Inlow, I don't know you, but I know your grandfather. I drank coffee with him a lot down at Dairy Queen. I'm not, I'm not, you're a whole lot better-looking man than he is. Okay, do I have a motion for Mr. Inlow?
So moved.
Second?
I'm planning to have it.
Okay. Get away, okay.